We have a consult agenda that we need approval of May 6th. And also April 29th minutes. Are there any objections? Okay, hearing none. Mark those okay. And then our first file, it's 535. Let's sign and go by here. Our first file is AM 0002-21. And ZC 0006-2121 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment in Zone Change. Rockstar LLC, Rockstar Land LLC is requesting a comprehensive plan amendment from agricultural forest land to rural residential. And a zone change from agricultural forestry 20 district to AF 20 to rural five, R5 property area is approximately 22 acres. It's located off Sanders Road in section one township 54 north range six Boise Meridian. Are there any conflicts of interest? Hearing none. Would staff present the file, please?
Good evening, everyone. This is Swati from Bonner County, Bonner County Planning Staff. This is file AM 000221 and ZC 000621. The applicant is Rockstar Land LLC. The applicant is requesting a comprehensive plan map amendment from agriculture forest land to rural residential. They are also requesting a zone change from agriculture forest land 20 to rural five district. This property is an unplatted piece of land approximately 22 acres in size and generally located to the west of Saunders Road in section one township 54 north range six west. It is directly accessed from Saunders Road, a county owned and maintained local road paved with treated gravel and with a speed limit of 35 miles per hour. As I said, it currently exists as an unplatted parcel of land and it is a barren forest area. The comprehensive plan designation for the property is currently agriculture forest land 1020 acres and the current zoning is AF 20. As you can see, the surrounding properties are zoned either AF 20 or R5. The surrounding properties are developed with residences, non irrigated agricultural land and barren forest area. The environmental factors on the property include no slopes over 15%. No mapped wetlands, no waterfronts or streams. The soil is currently classified as farmland of statewide importance. The flood hazard zone is X and it would not require any further floodplain review. There are no critical wildlife habitats. The current services on the property include an individual well system and individual septic and drainage system. It will be serviced by Spirit Lake Fire District and Avista Power Utilities. It is a part of Bonner School 83 district. To review the request, the applicant is requesting a comp plan map amendment from agriculture forest land to rural residential land use designation. And they are requesting a zone change from agricultural forest 20 district to rural five district. It is, the analysis is based on the following points. It doesn't have slopes of over 15% and it would be suitable for residential development and small scale agricultural practices as is applicable in rural residential land use and rural five district zoning. The property has access from Bonner County owned and maintained Saunders Road that has been designated as a local road by Bonner County Road and Fish Department. The property also has access to urban services and it will be served by Spirit Lake Fire District and Avista Utilities Power Company. Individual well, septic and drainage services would also be provided. These services support residential development as is applicable to rural residential land use designation and rural five zoning. The site does not contain any critical wildlife habitats. It is not characterized by agriculture or forest uses. As discussed earlier, it currently exists as barren forest land. The soils on the side are classified as farmland of statewide importance and are suitable for small scale agricultural uses along with residential development. Property is located in SF HZX and it would not require any floodplain review. It does not contain any wetlands, water fronts or streams. Based on this analysis, the proposal was found to be on in conformance with the principles of rural residential land use and rural five zoning. Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code. With that, staff recommends approval of this request. I can now take any questions.
Questions of staff at this time? Thank you, Swati. With the projects representative like to speak, please? You'd like to come up and state your name and address?
Yep, I'm Christian Starr with Rockstar Land. I live at 564 Roberts Lane, just down the road. There, as they stated, everything is in compliance with the current statewide and the county specs or whatever you want to call those. There was one thing with the Spirit Lake Fire Department that they had mentioned that it could create, create some problems with traffic because of the farm equipment that runs up and down the road. In the summertime, I am the farmer, so I'm not sure how that would create any problems. The roads, I take up half the road. There's plenty of room on the other side. As a farmer, I know all the equipment, so that was the only thing that that came back as kind of a negative thing. So, and I don't think they know that I am also the farmer that does all the farming and runs all the land near that and developing any of that land. I would rather see that land than our, our farmland is already in five acres. We don't want to see that develop because it's used for farming and raising animals. So we would prefer to develop into the timber more where the soil's not as good. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Close that and we'll move on to public comment. Does anybody wish to comment on this file? Anyone online, Jeannie? All right, thank you. Hearing none, we'll close that and open it up to commissioners deliberations. Pretty straightforward.
This is the area that we rezoned part of not long ago.
Oh, anyway, look for a motion.
Commissioner Bradish, I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners this project file AM 0002-21, requesting a comprehensive plan amendment from agricultural forest land 1022 rural residential 510 on a 22 acre parcel generally located to the west of Sanders Road and north of Acrey Drive in southwest Bonner County and addressed as south 870 feet of the east, 1150 feet of the southeast quarter of section one township 54 north range six west Boise, Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions law and based upon evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. Further move to adopt the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in taking private property.
Commissioner Bradish has made a motion to approve AM 0002-21 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment. Rockstar Land LLC. Is there a second?
Commissioner Reed, I second that.
Commissioner Reed with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you.
Commissioner Bradish, I move to recommend approval. I move to recommend.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. We're going to do the zone change. That was my mistake. I'm sorry. It's going to go. Go ahead.
I move to recommend approval to Board of County Commissioners this project file VC 0006-21, requesting a zone change from Ag Forest District 20 to Rural 5 on a 22 acre parcel generally located on the west of Sanders Road and north of Acrey Drive, the south within southwest Bonner County and addressed as south 870 feet of the east, 1150 feet of the southeast corner of section one township 54 north range six west Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho, finding that it is in accord with general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the following findings of fact and conclusions of laws written. This action does not result in taking private property.
Commissioner Bradish has made a motion to approve zone change. ZC 006-21. Is there a second?
Commissioner Reed, I second that.
Commissioner Reed with a second. Is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Okay, our next file is AM 0005-21 and ZC 00013-21 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Zone Change. Robert and Melina Conference. Co-friends, okay. Okay.
I'll just say.
Are requesting a comprehensive plan map change from rules residential to ag forest to rural residential and zone changed from rule five in ag forest 10 to rule five. Property is located off Rope Loop Lane, Rope or Off Rope Road in section 13 and 24 township 55 north range three west Boise Meridians. Any conflicts of interest? Hearing none. Would staff present the file, please?
Jeannie, can you share me? Let me share.
Thank you for being here, commissioners tonight and members of the public as well. Appreciate you all for being here. We're just going to get our screen shared here in a moment. We'll start the presentation. Yes. My name is Chad Chambers. I'm a planner here, Bonner County. All right. We're here tonight for a comprehensive land use plan amendment and a zone change off Kokalala Loop Road. So I'll present the staff report, an overview of the project. The public will have three minutes to testify per person. The applicant will have an opportunity to rebut and then we'll move to a commissioner deliberation and decision. So the property is, as I located off Kokalala Road and the applicants are requesting a comprehensive land use plan amendment and zone change. It's currently split zoned and the comprehensive plan is also split between two different comp plans. So they're just asking for it to be changed to one kind of congruent zone and comprehensive land use plan. And my map is not showing up. Let's just kind of, okay. Alrighty, so this map should be showing a split comprehensive land use plan. And so the top here is rural residential and we'll see in the next slide it mimics it. And then the bottom is agricultural forest land and that would be represented by kind of dark blue up here and then lighter green here and we'll see it in the next slide. This is our zone map. So I do apologize. I'm not sure why that map is missing. But this is kind of what the property looks like. So we can see it's split zoned. And the same applies to the comprehensive land use plan. So it's a 22.47 acre parcel. It's not platted. And access is by Rup Road, which is county owned road and maintained. There are some slopes in our map layer between 15 and 29% gradient and as well as wetlands on the property. Couple different types of soil, sagel silt loom and not prime farmland. Bonner gravelly ashley silt loom, which is prime farmland if well drained. Served by an individual well septic system in the Selkirk Fire District powered by Northern Lights and Bonner County School District 84. So here's a map of the soils. These are the review standards we use to review the file. And in general, they're trying to change the comprehensive land use rural residential designation. And I'm just going to kind of read this verbatim. The rural residential area provides for residential development where urban services are not available. Sloes may vary up to 30% or between 15 and 29 in parts of the property. These areas include hazard areas and critical wildlife habitats where lower densities reduce potential impacts to resources. Expose exposures to lost property or lives, small scale agricultural uses and residential development are permitted. So we reviewed the comprehensive plan first. Because that's kind of the layer beneath the zoning and that's how the county manages and forecasts its growth in general. And we did find that it was consistent with Bonner County Revised Code. Specifically speaking to those slopes that were beneath or below rather 30% gradient. there's already a home on the property, a shop, other structures. It's appropriate given the 30, the slopes do not prevail 30% or greater. And prime farmland soil in our, both in our, in our zoning, and we'll get to this in a moment, in our zoning district, prime farmland can be either designated in the agricultural forestry zoning or in the rural zoning district. So and again, kind of discussing those slopes again, that was one of the big factors in determining that this case was consistent with Bonner County Revised Code, being that the other half of the property is already zoned rural five acre. There's already a house on the property. And so we did conclude that it met Bonner County Revised Code for both criteria and we are recommending approval. At this point, I can take questions.
Questions of staff? The project representative like to come up and speak, please?
Travis Haller, I'm a clay professional land surveyor, 303 Church Street here in Sandpoint. I'm representing Rob and Melanie Co-Frances, the applicants. Um, this one's pretty easy. It's split zone out of compliance. We're not asking for anything that is not already currently half zoned or land use designation. There's always the question of how it get to be this way, you know? If you actually look at it, I'm 99% sure it was all based, that's a section line right there. And if you look across the, say, there's another section north-south, there's also split zoned lots right there. They're suburban. We're not asking for that. We're just asking rural residential. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Okay, we'll close that. Anyone on file? Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to comment? Hearing none, we'll move to commissioners deliberations and a motion.
So we've seen things like this before with lines established in the comp plan or in the zoning code. Right through the middle of the property. Obviously, it could go either way. Desire of the owner is something to keep in mind as we delve into updating the comprehensive. Yeah, I think Mr. Haller's right. As you look at the land use designations in the comp plan, they pretty much follow section. Inevitable that it's going to split parcel to.
That happened in '08, like all our other problems?
Well, yeah, initially with the comprehensive plan in 2004 or '05 and following zoning.
Oh, we need a motion.
Commissioner Frankenbach, I move to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners on this project file AM 0005-21, requesting a comprehensive plan amendment for a property designated as rural residential and ag forest to be rural residential, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Commissioner Frankenbach has made a motion to approve AM 0005-21 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Robert and Malini Conference. Your second?
Davis, I'll second that.
Commissioner Davis with second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and we'll move to the zone change.
Commissioner Frankenbach, again, I move to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners on this project file ZC 0013-21, requesting a zone change from rural five and ag forest 10 to be zoned as rural five, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Commissioner Frankenbach has made a motion to approve ZC 0013-21, excuse me, zone change. Robert and Malina Conference. Is there a second?
Mr. Davis, I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Davis with the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Move on to file. This is variance V 0008-21 variance waterfront setback. Bulk and impervious surface Jan Matheson is requesting a 16 foot waterfront setback for 40 foot is required. Approximately 55% or 35% is required. Parcel is zone recreational. Project is located off Sherwood Bay Road in section three township 59 north range four west Boise Meridian. Is there any conflict of interest for this file? Great, none. Would staff present the file, please?
Thank you, commissioners. Good to be here tonight with you. Appreciate your time. Away from everything to be here. This is a, this is an application for Kyle Matheson under Sherwood Beach LLC to create a variance for variance so he can add on to this piece of property. It's been existence for many years. The drawing that you have shows where the existing structure is and the request to add on to the dock, the request to add on to the back of the residence. We've, we see several of these at, in the Priest Lake area. The home built well before the zoning ordinance was written and even considered. The, the cabin is 16 feet from the high watermark. The request is to add on a deck to go another, it appears eight feet and then back and around. And so there, there will be some additional encroachment in the waterfront setback, but, but not extreme. The, the change in impervious surface, I'll show you in a minute, the property. But the change in impervious surface request is, is mostly due to the improvement, the improving of the gravel drive and, and the access to go down this small slope down to the water. This, this is the end of the road. Pun intended. But this, this piece of property is at the end and so the accommodation to widen the existing gravel drive to provide for an area large enough for a vehicle to turn around was, was part of the reason for the way the drive is designed. So this, this is a small lot. It's a .2 acre lot. Let's, let's look at that now. This is the parcel. .2 acres, roughly 9,000 square feet. as you can see here, it goes out into the water. Of course, you know the parcel lines as they lay down on the map, especially as we get close to the top of the world at Priest Lake, the lines are way off. So the, so those lines don't go out that far into the water, but nevertheless, it shows that. The property is zoned recreation. Minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet. The 9,000 square foot existing lot is grandfathered in. So grandfathered in non conforming lot means that it has the ability to have the, the normal home size that a regular property could have. The inconvenience is the fact that the codes were adopted on top of an existing structure. And so hence the request, as they, as they choose to remodel the property and, and can you imagine if we had building codes, we would be here all the time with these types of variances? Because folks, they want to bring them up to code. And that was the request here is, is bringing this, this property up to code. The, the natural resources, you're going to see the wetlands, you're going to see the slope. The slope along the top of the property is also creating some of the, some of the need to, to move this down where it is. But also what this doesn't show is the, the lesser slope as, as the property goes towards the water. And so hence the reason for the walking path, the way it was developed or designed. So we sent this out to agency review and to the neighbors and we've received no comments from the neighbors. We have received comment from PhD, well, no comment from PhD. They did send back the letter that said no comment. DQ sent their, their regular letter that, that said, please, you know, hand this to the applicant and let them be aware of, you know, our concerns with, with the regular standards. Idaho Fishing Game is, is definitely trying to prepare comments for each one of these files. A little bit in depth and their request was that the stormwater plan be designed capable of handling the impervious surface request to fifty-five percent and, and the additional features. And that, that was always the plan is to provide a stormwater plan consistent with the code. That, that process will be completed through the building and, and reviewed through the building location permit process. So we will do that. We'll review all those things there. You'll see that condition in the staff report. That that, like, like the staff report indicated, we do recommend approval with the conditions that it be developed in accordance with the approved site plan and that the project, the stormwater be completed and reviewed and installed along with the required building location permit. So staff, as staff reviewed this, we determined that it is consistent with Bonner County Revised Code. That the request to add on the structure, onto the structure while remodeling it, bring it in into compliance with building code standards is appropriate. The additions of the walkways and the gravel driveway will increase the imperfect, impervious surface. And so they should, they should work to offset that through the stormwater plan. So that would be in the best interest of the public for them to do that. I think they recognize that and I will let them respond to, to any of those questions. But again, as staff has reviewed this application, staff would recommend approval.
Any questions of staff at this time? Is the, thank you. The project representative here?
Why is my screen not sharing?
Yes, I'm Kyle Matheson, forty-seven eighty-one St. Mel Hill Road, Wenatchee, Washington. I'm the husband of Jan, one of the three owners of the family cabin. And we're wanting to upgrade the cabin so we can all stay there and have more bathrooms. And that's the idea. And I believe whatever the codes are or whatever the, I just say, you put the hoops where they're supposed to be and I'll jump them. And so that's the stormwater thing and we're aware of that and, and we're going to get a professional onboard and when we get the site location permit and get that taken care of. And so that's, any other questions?
Questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Okay, so we will close that portion and genius, or anybody online, public comment? Anybody in the audience wish to?
Somebody just raised their hand.
Okay. Go ahead, we'll do them first.
David Bowman?
Okay, can you hear me? Dave Bowman, three zero seven seven North Courtney Road. I just was curious about this, that the whole rationale for approving this or, or for this application was to bring the building up to code. And I was under the understanding that Bonner County doesn't have a building code. So you're, it looks like you're headed toward the, the fifty-five percent impervious surface and, and, and letting the forty-foot setback go in order to bring a building into code, building code where there, where there isn't one. So, I mean, I may have misunderstood some of that, so.
Let staff answer that question, Milton, please.
Sure. Again, that, that was just part of the request and we were just emphasizing that as part of the request. It was definitely not the justification for the project. We've, we've seen many, many of these properties along Priest Lake improve their, these cabins that were built well before the zoning ordinances were in place. The, the request is not, is, the request is not overwhelming to the property. A and B, it can be addressed with the stormwater management plan that's well-designed by a professional stormwater engineer. And the, these improvements can be addressed through that. The, obviously, the, the, the goal is to continue to protect the lake and improve the lake, but also to improve the, the experience on the property and make the property safe and inhabitable. And that is the request of the application. The stormwater plan makes that work. So that's how those issues are addressed.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments or anybody else online? Okay, so, post the public comment and we'll open it up for commissioners deliberations. And a motion.
See, a number of times in these hearings, the past catches up with us. Trying to do something with something that was built many years ago for good reasons, but not the same as today. It's hoping for more people, whatever. Again, like I said in the last one, here we are. Ready for a motion?
We're ready for a motion. Bring the old with to the new.
Commissioner, Commissioner Davis, I move to approve this project filed V zero 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 eight dash two one. Variance request to allow sixteen-foot setback from shoreline where forty is required. A bulk increase inside the waterfront setback and an increase in impervious surface coverage from thirty-five percent to fifty-five percent, finding that it is in accord. The Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. For the move to adopt the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written, the action that could be taken to obtain the variance is to complete the the section does not result in the taking of private property.
Commissioner Davis has made a motion to approve V zero 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 eight dash two one variance waterfront setback bulk in impervious surface. Jan Matheson. Is there a second?
Commissioner Frankenbach, I'll second that motion.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to our next file. Which is the zone change also heard about, Z C zero 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 five dash two one. Zone change, Lucas Wingert in Shannon Foley, is that correct? Did I get that right? Requesting a zone change from rural ten to rural five on ten acre parcel. The property is zoned rural ten. Project is located off South Segal Road in Section Thirty-Five Township Fifty-Six North, Range Two West Boise Meridian. Any conflict of interest? Staff, present the project.
Thank you, commissioners. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
This is Jason Johnson with Bonner County Planning, presenting file ZC zero 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 five dash two one. A zone change request for Foley and Wingert. As stated previously, this is a request for a zone change from rural ten to rural five. We have a diagram of the site there on the screen on the right-hand side. On the left-hand side are the dates when the required noticing was sent out. Here we have an aerial photo of the site served by South Segal Road. You can see there. The site has a single-family dwelling and various outbuildings. Access to the site is provided via South Segal Road. It's county-owned and maintained. And there's a sixty-foot wide ingress, egress and utility easement to the parcel from South Segal Road. The site is served by an existing well, septic system. It's in Selkirk Fire District, served by Vista Utilities and is in Bonner School District Number Eighty-four. These two colors probably look pretty identical on the screen. This is how our GIS spits them out. They are different shades of blue, although it might not be apparent. Showing the current land use of rural res five to ten acres and the current zoning of rural ten. This showcases the environmental features on the site. Not much of note, a very tiny amount of steep slopes in the, in a southern corner there and a small amount of wetland crossing the southern portion of the property. The soils are pondery silt loam. It's not prime farmland. Here we have a list of the agencies that were noticed as a part of this project. We got the standard five-page DEQ recommendation list. No public comments were received on this file at the time of staff report preparation. We've seen this before tonight, the comprehensive plan designation for rural residential. I won't read through it again. Getting to the zoning criteria here, there's kind of a two-pronged test for whether a rural res parcel should be R-ten or R-five zoning. The first prong of the test is if the site is characterized by slopes that are steeper than thirty percent. If it's located within critical wildlife habitat or contains prime agricultural soils. If it's served by a network of public or private roadways that don't meet applicable road standards. If it's within a floodway or if it contains limited access to public services. Additionally, I want to draw attention to the and/or here. If the site is in an area already developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acre density, doesn't necessarily have to meet all of the criteria above. This is an either-or proposition for whether or not it should be R-five. It can meet either one of those prongs in the test. So this site is, as I said, mostly flat, contains no slopes greater than thirty percent, very tiny area of mapped slopes down on the southern corner. The IDEQ review that we received was just a five-page recommendation letter. No agencies commented that this was critical wildlife habitat. The site does not contain primag soils. The site is provided access via South Segal Roll Road. Site is not within a floodplain, has, is well-served. And, and this is the separate part of the test here. Much of the area surrounding the parcel in question is already developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acre density. So even if it didn't meet any of the other standards, which it does, the site would still qualify for a rezone to R-five based on that one criteria alone. And so based on that, the characteristics that we've outlined here, it looks like the property is more in line with rural five than with rural ten zoning. And staff therefore recommends approval of the request for a zone change from rural ten to rural five. Were there any questions?
Questions of staff this time?
Yes, I am. Question, Jason. It appears that access to subject, to the property here is by an easement off Segal, South Segal Road. Is that correct?
There is a driveway, yes.
And all the properties around it are zoned R-ten or, yeah, rural ten, correct?
That's correct.
No, that's that's it. Just making sure.
Any other questions of staff? Hearing none with the applicant's representative. Mr. Miller would like to come up and speak, please?
Lance Miller, True North Land Surveying, I'm representing Foley and Wingert. My address is Box twenty-five twenty-three Sandpoint, Idaho. Yeah, the, basically what they want to do is bring it density-wise into, so that it matches mo- all the properties on its west boundary and north boundary, the five acre parcel. And then you have five acre parcels to the east, Five Lakes Estates. And if you zoom down on that map, you'd see that most of the parcels to the northwest mainly are five acre parcels. So it was previously zoned R-five and it was changed to ten. The comp plan recognized that five acre parcels were suitable there. That's why you have that five acre designation in the comp plan. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comment. Anybody online? Okay. Mr. Bremer, would you like to come up and speak?
That's my husband. He, he doesn't talk.
Okay.
It's Liam Renner. We live at three one eight three South Segal Road. We actually maintain the road or driveways, you guys are calling it, from South Segal up to our property and we're at the other end of the property. Our concern is with the condition of the driveway. A, when it was put in, it wasn't really built for up to code either. And there's culverts that are either plugged or not big enough. So we have trouble with erosion on the road as well. And then we were wondering about the sixty-foot easement, but I guess that's something that's just there. When you come right off of South Segal, obviously the driveway right now isn't sixty feet wide. So no, I mean, right when it comes off of South Segal, where our driveway comes off and we go through uh, I don't remember the people that live on the greenhouse. Then we go through Foley's property and it goes through Troy, I don't know Troy's last name either. Property up to ours. And so that was our biggest concern was the condition of the driveway. And if they, which way they split this, depending on where they, you know, have to either add to the road or add to the driveway. And since, like I said, we maintain it mostly out of courtesy to everybody else, we're the ones that use it most because we live at the further end. So those are our biggest concerns, right? Is just that part of the driveway. We don't care if it's, what size their property is, it's just the driveway part.
Okay. Miller, you have anything to say about the road and the
Lance Miller again? No, no comment on the road. It is from South Segal Road to the subject property. A sixty-foot ingress, egress, utility easement. So it leaves open a lot of possibilities. But I can't speak for the owners of what their
They need to all get together and work on the road.
But it is like an overly large easement for property access like that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else need to comment? Nobody else online? We'll close public comment and open it up.
Sir?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify so that if that is designated private road easements, if there were to be improvements, is every, that be a homeowner that has access going to have to help?
Well, I would think that you need to get together with everybody that uses the road and, and do some sort of road maintenance program together.
Because we had an agreement originally with Paul Uber, whatever it was before he, he sold to Ty Mooney and then I, we assumed that that agreement went with property that we never knew.
We have no, yeah, we have no control over that. You know, you guys are going to have to get together and form a little road maintenance. Maybe one party can buy, they can all buy a load of, a rock and put on the road. Something like that. We have no control. Okay, we'll close the public comment, open it up for commissioners deliberations and a motion.
Commissioner Glasser, hey, Jason.
Commissioner Glasso, hey, Jason, Mr. Miller did bring up a good point and just out of curiosity, could you expand that out just a little bit more so we could see some of the smaller parcels? Appreciate that. Thanks, Jason.
Not a problem.
Listen, another one and I've yeah, I'm stuck on updating the comprehensive plan wholesale. So I've been asking a lot of questions. This area was prior to the last comprehensive plan amendment, this area was five acre rural residential complex and then it went to lower density, both in the conplan and zoning code. But I have been asking, we're going to get a meeting up sometime soon with some of those previous people involved to say why, what what happened. Where it was decided that even though a lot of files have been created, that it should now move to ten acres. Just give us the background because we happened, there's had to be some reasons for it. So we need to find that out. But in the meantime, the comprehensive plan does have that provision that the area is developed by acre lots that which this area is and is quite a bit of Segal that way. So it's an interesting situation. Also, we need to make a motion. Approve, deny, or
Commissioner Glasso, I motion to approve. I'm going to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners on this project file ZC zero 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 five dash G one. Requesting a zone change from rural ten to rural five for the parcels noted in the staff report, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated following conclusions of law. And based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of staff report, was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt that following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Commissioner Glasso has made a motion to approve zone change zero 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 five dash two one. Zone change Lucas Wingert and Shannon Foley. Is there a second? Commissioner Frank and Boss with a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, own favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, we're going to move on to our next file, which is a zone change. ZC zero zero one one dash two one, zone change Ada Robertson and Donna Bellitt or Bellitt requesting, thank you, are requesting a zone change from rule ten to rule five on a twenty-one point thirty-three acre parcel. Property is zone rule ten. The project is located off east Newford Road. In section thirty-five township fifty-six north, range two west Boise Meridian. Any conflicts of interest? Hearing none with the staff, present the file, please.
Thank you, commissioners. This is Jason Johnson again, Bonner County Planning. This file is going to be very similar to the last one. In fact, when I zoomed out on my map, you might have noticed I even had a parcel. There were two parcels highlighted. We're actually talking about this one just to the north there. I'm probably going to go sort of quick through this because it's virtually an identical request with virtually identical criteria and standards. Of course, we're going from rural ten to rural five is the proposal. It's a twenty-one point three three acre parcel. Again, same area of of ground. The site is still mostly flat. There are a few slopes, less than thirty percent on the very south end. Two small mapped wetland areas on the property. There are no primag soils. And the site is of course surrounded by R ten zoning to the southeast and west, as you saw in the previous file. To the north across East Dufort Road, there is R five zoning. We have a diagram of the site right here, along with the dates that all the required noticing was done on this file. Parcel's currently vacant and unplanted. You can see the aerial photo there on the right. Access to the site is provided direct off of East Dufort Road. We have an individual well and septic system for water and sewage. And of course, the site is still served by Selkirk Fire, Avista Utilities and School District number eighty-four. We have the zoning and the land use designation there on the left and right of the screen. You can see that to the north, just across East Dufort Road, the zoning does change to R five. We have the environmental features here. There are a couple of small patches of mapped wetland area or possible mapped wetland area and a few slopes on the south end of the property. Again, we're on pondery silt loam soils, just like the last parcel just to the south, not designated as prime farmland. These were the agencies we routed for public comment. Again, we just got the IDEQ five page recommendation sheet, same as on the last file. We got no other comment from any other agencies and no public comments were received on this application at the time of staff report prepared. I won't reread the rural residential criteria. We've seen those several times tonight. Again, we have to have slopes that are characterized greater than thirty percent or critical wildlife habitat or primag soils. Or roads that don't meet county standards or floodway or limited access to public services in order to keep this in R ten. And also, even if those are true, if we have five acre parcels nearby, that test alone is enough to tell us that we can rezone this to R five. So as previously mentioned, the site is mostly flat. We only got some recommendations from IDEQ. They didn't say that it was critical wildlife habitat. There's no primag soils on the site. Site is accessed directly off of East Dufort Road, which is county owned and maintained. Site's not within a flood plain. It is well served. And much of the area surrounding the parcel is developed at or near one dwelling unit per five acres. Including across the road to the north where it already is zone five acres. So similar to the last file, it does appear that this property's characteristics are more in line with rural five than with rural ten zoning. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the request for a zone change from rural ten to rural five. And were there any questions on this file?
Questions to staff? Okay, thank you, Jason. The project representative come up, please, again.
Dan Provault, three, four. Where do I live now? Yeah, three, seven, four, six, Westman Road. Out very close to this project. Jason covered most of the the items very well. What I would like to do is just highlight a couple of items. What they what what was shown on the screen and give a close up of what was going on in that area. So I've got a shot here of that.
We'll have to go to Genie first, please.
Exhibit A. Those are larger area coverage of our files in the north. Those you were on the edge of a seed of fives. Also, exhibit B. Highlighted is our subject property. All the red dots are five acre parcels. Most of them are. There are a few in there that are larger than five or less than ten. And these are now located in that's that's a three thousand foot radius. So you can see that we are heavily within that size of of acres that we're asking to be resolved. And also we are directly running on East Dufort Road.
Any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, thank you. Move on to public comment. We'll start James Robertson.
I'm, uh, my name is James Robertson. I currently live in Coopville, Washington. I'm the personal representative of Ada Robertson, the estate. That's my mother. This, this is the last piece of the old ranch that my great grandfather bought in nineteen seventeen. In fact, it was that entire square mile originally. It's been sold off over the years, bit by bit. Actually give you a little history and why there's that R five a strip that got reversed because that belonged to my uncle Donald. And when he passed away, we sold that off for his his widow and the developer bought it and made five acre parcels. Back then it was all ranch and farmlands. And so I think the community, you know, that was very unusual at the time to see such small lots. So they they had it changed. But now here we are in twenty twenty-one, it's changed quite a bit. This land has come down from my grandfather to through my mother and my my aunt and I now. Our goal has always been to keep it as timberland. We've never built on it, never even put in a well, you know, we go out there camping and hiking and people like, why don't you put a well out here? Why don't you run power and say, no, we just kept it, you know, how how it has always been. Because that's that's the way we like it and we've welcomed all the neighbors who have moved in and all the other smaller lots to use the trails and go hunting and whatnot. And we come out a few times a year to do horseback riding and camping and whatnot. But our goals now changed a little bit because and and Donna is exhausted her her retirement. And so the family got together and decided we'll sell the the front.
Sorry. It's hard to sell family property.
Sorry, but so we decided basically we'll sell the the front twenty-one to help out and Donna and then we'll keep the back one twenty-eight. The way it's been. And so naturally to get the most value out of the the land. Makes sense to subdivide it because that's what everyone else has done and it's hard to sell twenty acres. There's a lot of families moving into the area that have, you know, want to start a family. Build a house, whatnot, so.
That's all right. We we got it. Thank you, sir.
So that so that's the goal. Any questions?
Okay, we have nobody else online? Okay. Move on to we'll close the public comment and move on to commissioners deliberations with motion. We'll go ahead.
We didn't ask for anybody else in the audience.
Does nobody else hear to comment?
You didn't ask.
That's okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All I have to say is this property does connect with the corner of ours, but he's been in contact with us and he's been great. Go ahead and let him do it.
Probably on his grandfather's property.
We have a five acre lot, too.
Okay, so we'll close public comment and open it up for commissioners deliberation and a motion.
Any comment?
Oh, I always have a comment.
Commissioner Reeve, I move to recommend approval of the Board of County Commissioners on this project file ZC zero zero one one dash two one. Requesting a zone change from rural ten to rural five for the parcel noted in staff report. Finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. And based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was repaired. And testimony received at this hearing, I further move to adopt the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Mr. Reed has made a motion to approve ZC zero zero one one dash two one zone change. Ada Robertson and Donna Bellitt are requesting a zone change from rule ten to rule five on twenty-one point thirty-three acres. For a second.
Commissioner Glasso, I'll second it.
Mr. Glasso with a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, own favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, we need a break for a minute before we move on to this next file. It might take some time. Guys, okay, just move on. Okay, okay, this file is for a conditional use permit zero 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 nine dash two one. Conditional use permit waste transfer site Bonner County is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a waste transfer site. To provide for the collection of recyclables and trash. Pro property is two acres and zone suburban. The project is located up north Riley Creek Road in section thirty township fifty-six north. Range three west Boise Meridian. Josh, you ready to go? You going to do it from here? Okay. We hope. No conflict of interest.
Commissioner Reeve, I will cruise myself. I've been working on that.
Okay. We're having a technical difficulty. Oh, there we go.
Thank you.
I'm sure now it works. If we learned anything from Mr. Pilch. Let's do it this way. Okay. Button, button, who's got the button? Where'd it go? No, it's not that one. Yes, it's that one.
Okay, commissioners, sorry about that. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, commissioners, great to be with you tonight. Tonight. I am Josh Pilch, Bonner County Planning. Tonight I'm presenting CUP zero 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 nine dash twenty-one. This is Bonner County Midway Collection Site for Bonner County Solid Waste. Project summary, Bonner County is requesting conditional use permit approval for solid waste recycling collection site to replace an existing site on Renco Loop Road. This is
This is the existing site on Renco. Uh, right now. And that did not translate, but there's some more pictures. You can see it's a little bit of a mess, a lot like my pictures.
Stop and shop?
Yes, stop and shop. I think, I don't think that's what that says, but, um, new site is proposed in Lakeland here, just behind the gas station where that red flag is at, um, just off of Highway 2. Here's a, um, more zoomed in picture, you can see it behind the gas station and the church there. It's just off of, on the, it would be the east side of North Riley Creek Road there. Um, here's kind of a, an overlay of the site that the, the dark section indicates the paving where the paving will be for the site. Um, as you can see, it's not the entire two acre site. It's, it's less than an acre that actually is, gets paved. Uh, here's the, the site layout with the stormwater and the fencing and, um, utilities and pavement and, um, so there's the, the site, a better view of the site map. Uh, zoning there is suburban, you can see it's, it's contiguous there with Rural Service Center and, um, just, just off the highway, the, um, land use is transitional. These are some pictures of the site. Um, I was out there earlier this week. You can see that it's, it's, um, it's flat and, um, it's kind of gives you a, uh, ground level view of the, of the site there. Uh, public use table, uh, the code, you can see down there, solid waste collection facilities require a conditional use permit. Which is why we're, we're, we're here tonight going through that in particular, uh, this process. There's some more, uh, site pictures from the, the Lakeland site. You can see on the, on the left there is Riley Creek Road, paved road. Um, you can see there's utilities again, the, the property is flat. Uh, stormwater, uh, plan was provided and we looked at that in the site map. This is some information about, uh, the impervious surface and, and the amount of the site that will get paved and impervious. Uh, agency comments, I'm sure that you've all had the file and staff report to go through and look at those. You can find those in the file. Public comments, we had several public comments, those are in the file as well, I'm sure you've seen those. Um, staff recommends, recommends approval on this particular project. I wanted to give some reference to this, to this project as I, as we started with. The Renco site is, um, is less than impressive, it's had lots of issues. We, we get complaints on that from time to time. But I, I wanted to show you this one, it's the Upland Site, it's here west of Sandpoint. And this is kind of the, the model that is being followed for the Lakeland Site. You can see the landscaping and the fencing and the signage that's up there. You know, you'll notice that the site is, um, it's pretty clean. You notice there's light poles, um, it's gated. There's signage, hours operation, this, this is the, this is the objective for the Lakeland Site. Is something like this. And so looking at site plans doesn't always give us a lot of information about what it's going to look like when it's finished. But this site was put up in 2017, went through the same process. Uh, you can see landscaping and the fencing. Um, site here, um, at the Upland Site has a site attendant that's there full time. You can see that, uh, that site is clean enough to eat off the, the pavement there. They, they keep it really nice. Got a, some other pictures, pavement in the site, there's not trash, it's not a mess. They, they've done a nice job of, of keeping it clean. It's hard to see in there, in their picture, but there is some lighting poles, all the lighting is facing downward. There were some issues and concern about lighting, light pollution. But this is, this is the example that I could find to, to paint a better picture of, of what they're trying to achieve in Lakeland. And it's, it's not Renco Loop. It's, it's going to be a much better situation. So I'll, I'll end with that and I'll take any questions at this time.
Questions, staff? So, do you want to take site layout questions or should?
I think it would be best to let the, uh, rep do that.
We'll do that.
Want me to pull that back up?
Yes.
Is this the one?
Yeah.
You want the other one?
Um. Yeah, let's use that.
Okay.
Hi, I'm, I'm Brandon Stagland, I'm a Bonner County Staff Engineer. So I'm the representative applicant, which is solid waste. I just wanted to clarify really quick. We've used the term transfer site a couple of times. And DEQ has a specific definition of what a transfer site is. Uh, but instead of getting into a semantic discussion, I just want to explain exactly what it is we're doing. This is not like, uh, Coburn Culver. This is just a residential household collection site where people come to put their household trash and dumpsters. And then it gets held to, uh, to Coburn eventually. So, um, there's going to be paved area, dumpsters, but the whole site's going to have fence all the way around it with privacy slots. So you won't be able to see in, uh, there'll be gates, there'll be an attendant, there will be site lighting, but it'll be on switches and controls to keep it so that it won't be on all 24 hours a day. You know, it's just lighting so that in those parts of the winter, when the site's still up until 5:00 or whatever, they have a little bit of light and then they'll turn it off when the, I believe that's how we're going to do it. Turn the lights off when, uh, when the site's closed. So, that's just.
In the application, it, it talked about the driveway and why it connects over to the gas station. Go through that a little bit.
So, um, as a, as a condition of getting this property from the property owner, this triangular piece that we're talking about actually got carved out from the larger piece of property. The agreement was made to construct a one-way, uh, truck exit lane for semis that are fueling up at the Lakeland Store. So, um, they're gonna go around that curve and out onto Riley Creek Road. Instead of now what they have to do, which is try to back up in the limited space in the Lakeland Store and try to get back out on the highway. So it's a much safer, I mean, there's going to be the, the same trucks that go there. It's just that there's, they're going to be able to get onto the highway through a proper approach instead of having to turn around.
So that's a, from the station site.
Yes.
To go over to Riley Creek.
Exactly.
Yeah, I was wondering because that was to come into the site, the gas station site, that's, that's a problem, but.
So it's tough, we're going to have signage to try to keep people from using that as a cutoff to get to the Lakeland Store.
Yeah.
But it's not like we can put spikes out there or anything to.
So the gate, the gate's going to be where the dual-throated driveway is into the site.
That's right.
This driveway thing won't be gated off of.
It will not. Yeah, we thought about that, but it's just going to be too much, uh, too much of operational. I mean.
Those, speaking of the dual-throated entrances to the site, suffer those, one of those an exit and one of them an entrance?
That's right, yeah, we're going to try to control entry and exit into single lanes so that, uh, it just works a little bit better. Um, this is the first site, I believe, that, of, of these that we're going to try to do this on. We didn't really do that on Upland.
Or on Segal. It's wide, but it's due for it, that's one.
So we're hoping that'll just make it a little, the traffic a little better. We're going to try to sign it. I think people will get it after the first season, hopefully.
And, and just out of curiosity, this, what kind of a schedule do they expect here? Is this going to be like five days a week in the winter time and seven days in the summer? Like, like the Eastern Segal site is out on Garfield Day Road?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure about the schedule yet.
Hours of operation collection site will be open, oh, like from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, seven days a week with major holiday closures.
According to the sign, it's okay to trespass during hours. Is that right?
That's what it says.
During hours, you trespass all you want. That, those signs, trespassing is such a weird word. The word itself means don't be here. And the devil's, it says no. Yeah. You done with the engineer?
I'm, okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, with the solid waste, like to come up and think about the project and.
My better director of solid waste.
Why?
So, since I've been director in 2016, we've worked very hard to try to locate property for an appropriate site for this area of Bonner County. As you know, before this, there was an area across the highway that was not manned. It was another duplicate of Renco. So, um, we found this opportunity to, um, create a site here with a deal with the landowner. As you see, it's going to be very, very clean and we are very, um, uh, our goal is environmental improvements in all of our sites. So we appreciate your consideration, uh, for this site.
I can hold you there, i- if, uh, how much hazardous waste is being dumped on the field site? Being that it's uncontrolled, yeah.
A lot, I mean, it's big.
So i- i- it's similar to the, well, it was before your time, the Green Owl Station was, was bad and, uh, and a lot of, lot of out of state garbage was coming there and it was, yeah, it was a big time mess and I'm sure this is the same there.
And you were saying, you were noting that the hours that were stated in the staff report are incorrect, but it is also stated in the application as such.
So our five days a week. Five days a week, that was a day during winter months, summertime, seven days, eight hours a day. Hours, we will, depends on the peak hours as far as traffic counts. Seven to three or could be eight to four. That's yet to be determined.
Okay.
Based on the public.
Thank you, any other questions? Okay, we'll close that portion and open it up to public comment. We'll do folks online first, Jeanie.
So currently, no one has their hand up online.
Okay, no one has their hand up, so we'll move to the audience.
We have hands now. We had one there for seven minutes. Okay. Jim Vanderway?
Yes.
Uh, address please for the record?
888 Riley Creek Park Road.
Okay.
So I have a question about the traffic. Uh, when, um, the mill is very busy, there gets a lot of, uh, big, uh, lo- logging trucks backed up going west, trying to turn in to the mill. So what happens with all this traffic coming from the west and from the east? Going into the mill and then trying to go in to this waste management place? You're going to get it backed up really bad, because I've seen it.
Well, the staff report said that they were looking at approximately a hundred to 120 cars a day.
That doesn't surprise me, but what are you going to do when it's backed up? From, uh, the entry into the gate into the waste management down rent, or down the Riley Creek to Highway 2? And then Highway 2 is backed up.
Don't think you'll have a backup of people going into the transfer site.
With the big trucks coming out from the, uh, store? And then taking this presented road that the, that, uh, they said that you guys would permit them to use to get onto Riley Creek? So they didn't have to back up to get on Highway 2? Now you're using the Riley Creek Road for the big, uh, trucks also?
Let.
Coming out of the store.
Let the staff engineer ask, answer your question, man.
Uh, just really quick, my name's Brandon Stagland, I'm staff engineer for Bonner County. Um, regarding the question about cars being backed up onto Riley Creek Road, we did look at that a little bit. And we tried to provide enough queuing length on our site to allow somewhere between 10 and 15 cars to be queued up at the entrance gate to the site, to enter the site. Um, which is probably a lot more than you're ever going to see because the gate is not, is going to be open during open hours. And it's not, there's not, you're going to have to stop every time to talk to the attendant, the, the cars are just going to be driving.
Can you take your arrow and show me where that gate is? Okay, right there, all right. So you're going to have big trucks coming out from the Lakeland Store? And they're going to be driving on the right-hand side of the road? And then you've got cars coming up, uh, Riley Creek Road? And they're going to be on, and they're going to be crossing between the big trucks and the cars to get through that gate.
That's right, so the, the cars entering the solid waste collection site are going to yield, uh, the left turn into the site to any semi truck that's exiting, just like you would on any two-way road.
Well, it might start out okay, but I can tell you, you're going to get people that come from Priest River that don't want to go the other route and they'll come down here, people all over go up to Renco. So, and as the place grows, you're going to have a lot more problems with your traffic. I can just tell you that, plus all the backup from the mill that already is occurring.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome, thank you.
No other hands, anybody in the audience wish to speak? Name and address for the record, please.
Name's Dave Stevens, I live at 499 Riley Creek Park Drive, which is not Riley Creek Road. Just in case you're UPS driver and you don't want to get lost, it's, it's south. Understand, I'm, I'm not a professional land planner, you want to certify an airplane, I'm your guy. But I wanted to let the board know, um, basically the word of mouth that's running around the cleat, the concerns that are being expressed. And since there's really nobody else here, I'll fill you in. There are three primary concerns that I have heard. Uh, one of them is the placement of the collection site, which is functionally, in what is currently a pseudo-residential areas, close to residential areas. And as you can imagine, as Lakeland continues to grow, it's going to get more residential around that area, which makes it very different than the current Upland Site or, or where Renco is now. They're, they're somewhat more removed. And this is basically going to be snack, smack dab in the middle of town. I mean, that is functionally the intersection that creates Lakeland, right? Right next to the church, right next to the store, um, just south of an existing residential house. So that's, people's concern is that. Uh, I realize they may have been the only place that was available to consider purchasing at the time that it was purchased. I know there are other places available now, one, uh, just outside of town towards Sandpoint, there's five acres that's going up for sale there. It would still be close, but more removed from what is the downtown core of, of Lakeland. Another concern is the, which may be the wrong word being used to, you know, get back to the semantics argument. There's a lot of information out there that is telling people this is a transfer station, which is a hugely different thing than a collection station. Uh, so there's concern from people that if this is passed inadvertently as a transfer station that allows it, the conditional use is now a transfer station. And in the future, it could become a transfer station because that's what it's been approved for. And so there's concerns about that. I know a lot of people voted against the levy yesterday because of those. I know a lot of people voted against the levy yesterday because of those words for no other reason. And then the third is was already brought up online is the the traffic backup. Right now, just the way that it currently is with the with the mill being there and that being really the only access point, the intersection in Leclerc. Traffic is backed up in the left hand turn lane. Admittedly, there's a turn lane. But if if you live where I do and you're coming from Sandpoint and you wanna turn south, there's times I'm sitting in the middle of the highway for twenty or twenty-five minutes waiting to turn left because there will be ten logging trucks in the left hand lane waiting to turn left that can't turn left because the guys coming from Priest River are in being able to sneak around the right corner and they're stacked up down the highway. It's that intersection, just the access at that intersection is already, especially when logging is running high, is already so overwhelmed that although it seems like, well, it's not gonna be a lot of traffic, it's just everything else that's going on there right now has a lot of people concerned about what that intersection is going to become when you stack that waste site on top of what the mill already does. Those are the three big concerns. I want you guys to be aware of them for your deliberations and I thank you for your time.
Okay. Howie Rose, are you there?
Um, can you hear me?
Must be muted or something.
Help me, Matt.
Anybody else?
You go first.
I just have one question. Josh on the on the Matt Lewin Scott Sigalite home. On the proposed plat on where that's located, it appears that there is some kind of a reservation between that parcel and the Leclerc stores that are right away going through that.
It is.
Is that a public right of way or a?
No, it's not a public right of way. It's a it's part of the larger piece of property surrounding the property we're talking about. And there is a utility easement over the top of that whole property, but it's privately owned and it's not a it's not a public right of way.
Would you like to address your okay?
One other thing. Thanks for your comments. I appreciate that. I just wanna clarify, though, that the bond election that was just recently on Tuesday is unrelated to this site, this project. So the that money's gonna be used for existing solid waste facilities, not not this current project.
And to go back to your comment about the transfer site, we're gonna clean that up when the motion is made. Problem with the traffic, that's a mill and an ITD problem. And if it's if it's that bad, then you need to start getting on the district engineer.
No new problem, I can tell you that.
Mr. Davis was with ITD permitting. Okay, we we okay? We all right, Jeannie? Okay, so we're gonna close public comment and we'll move on to commissioners deliberations and a motion. And with the motion, we'll need to clean up the wording of the transfer site.
It says solid waste collection site, so I don't know.
Well, it's we only have one transfer site and that's on corporate.
But nothing here says transfer.
Public notice that was posted on the property, et cetera.
What we've got in front of us only says collection site.
Okay, so we're okay.
If it's correct, it's correct. And whether the bond was related or not, I'm saying people saw the poster, I saw the word transfer site. Voted against the bond because it must be related to this thing, right? Or I'm saying it was rational.
Okay, all right. All right, so we're done with the so talking to public, we're
I'm gonna say I like the in and out thing. Being a Culver Culver person and everything backs up and then the trucks coming literally sideways with and I and I'm saying like, you know, I do have to work when he's on topic. So yeah, I think that's gonna be cool having in and out. Hmm, it got close. Yeah, it got close.
And put it by the gate.
I can throw it in the dumpster and drive it through, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this intersection has been on the list for many years. Various things have been talked about, but nothing's there. So there is no vote for any.
Well, it seems to me that Riley Creek could pick the trucks in the back road instead of going to the
Well, that's been talked about that that there should be a different entrance to the west, especially to get to the Steeler and but anyway, it's always been a problem and it's sporadic. It's up, it's up. If it's not, it's quiet, so.
Well, I I work in the timber industry and for some reason, every single log truck driver goes to work at the same time. And they'll get to the mill at the same time. I can't speak for I've G, but but long term, I know they're working on kind of a dispatching system for some of their trucks and some of their own company owned timber to try to even flow of log trucks coming in there. If they would just stagger their start schedule, they would not all get there at the same time.
How much to do with the solid waste? And my other past things was I was on a committee with solid waste yawns ago, looking at sites. It is a thankless job. Think you found one, it falls out from underneath. So this one has. Yeah, it's in there in downtown Leclerc. I guess the good news is these sites are so much better today than they than the other ones that we're aware of. And it's right across the street from Riley Creek's dump yard for the mill waste. Big site there that's loaded with mill waste. Anyway. So. Here we are again.
Well, we've
Last call is public.
Close public testimony, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sure ITD could sit down with Riley Creek, they could work something out like Taylor was saying, and if they have property on that side, they could have staging working. Yeah, there's a lot of ways to fix getting the trucks out.
Armin has talked with him at length before about this, he has certain ideas. Armin has certain ideas, so maybe they might get together. Not there anymore.
We'd have to have a a motion and a vote. Be up to the someone would have to make a motion to open back up.
Only seven. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davis. Make a motion to open it to public comment again?
Mr. Davis has made a motion to open up public comment for file CP CUP zero 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 nine dash two one conditional use permit waste transfer or waste. Let's recall it.
Collection site.
Waste waste collection site. Is there a second?
Commissioner Glassell, I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, go ahead. Oh, yes, we have to go. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion carries.
So my 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 question is just a thought that maybe my understanding is the mill itself is not there under conditions.
Well, it's been there forever, but there's no permit associated with it.
It's on.
I thought it was under condition.
It may have been, but it's on.
I don't think it was because Frank Meyer took it over and that is all. Well, then my question is.
And that's why the that's why the whole area is designated.
Lovely, that lovely pink spot is the mill that's industrial. Why we picked pink for industrial?
I wasn't here.
Anyway, yeah, that's
Yeah, my my point is, right?
Okay.
And when you look at the transition designation, it's the whole area is designated transition, which is which is all the zoning layers are consistent with this designation. So it could be rezoned to anything. So it's a then when they planned Leclerc, they just dropped a thing there square mile.
Okay.
This one was perfect.
All right, let's close public testimony and go back to commissioners deliberation, please.
All right. So are you ready for a motion on the file?
Yes, yes, sir.
Commissioner Davis, I move to approve this project file CUP zero 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 nine dash two one. Midway Solid Waste Collection Site finding that this is in accord with the general specific objectives of Bonner County Compets Plan and Bonner County Revised Code enumerated in following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time that the staff this time staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. Further move to adopt the following findings, fact and conclusions of law is written. The action that could be taken to obtain the condition which permits, including conditions of approval as adopted.
Commissioner Davis has made a motion to approve conditional use permit zero 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 nine dash two one conditional use permit waste collection site, Bonner County. Is there a second?
Commissioner Bradish, I'll second it.
Commissioner Bradish with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks. All yours, boss.
Hey. There we go. Well. Man, I I can't tell you it well, I can. It six hundred and fifty-two building location permits since January first. So we just took in MLD ninety-two, three and four minor land division. So we did a hundred and three land divisions last year and we're at ninety-four year to date. Created, we've probably created close to three hundred and fifty new lots. So.
It was the was the character of the properties being divided twenties, forties, tens? All the above?
All the above. There there are lots of twenties being divided. So into fives.
Yeah, because of where they are.
Yeah. Yeah, there there are some suburban zones being split down to two and a halves and there are a few one acre for, you know, four lot splits. But not very many. Most of them are fives and tens. There's lots of twenty acres zoning or ten acres zoning that's being split down to ten acre minimums. So those all require you know, a subdivision process. We are having a few contiguous MLDs. I suspect that'll continue. The board tabled the subdivision ordinance. Well, they really tabled it. They they went through and and basically said what they were going to adopt and then we we have to go out and publish that proposal one more time. So they they did adopt all but one, I think, of the of the planning commission's recommendations. So they yeah, but they they did ask for a meeting with PhD board. So to try and come to a solution for that. So it has not been scheduled yet.
Go back to the MLDs area wise, we getting more activity? One area, other.
They're 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 all over the place. Yep. The the Hoodoo Valley, Blanchard, Athol area, well, Carywood and coming this way. We're starting to see quite a few in Coca Lala and Sagal area. Rare compared to the rest of the county up Sally Valley. But there are some up that way.
It's mostly southern.
Yeah. So we are, we are seeing a few bigger lots, you know, use the MLD process together. So but yeah, we had it was it wasn't this week. Was it last week or was it the week before that we took in twenty? Yeah, right before the subdivision ordinance, we took in twenty MLDs that week. Yeah, it was so needless to say, we are a little behind.
So an interesting thing I've been thinking about this whole subject is just do a little little deed research with those to see how long the property has been held by the people providing. Because the ones that I've looked at, just kinda casually looking around. Quite a few that I spotted. Are properties where the person now doing the action on the property has held it for two or three years or less. Not the long time, not like we had tonight, the family that's still on the property for a hundred years.
Well, all all these zone changes that we're doing, they're all they either have an MLD in process or or they're planning one. So some of these families are starting to split their properties for family members.
But it's it's just I it'd be interesting. I don't know that it really cause a conclusion conclusion is necessary, but it's an interesting fact that we're seeing some amount of speculation that this really is, I take it for that. Well, it means buying properties one or two years later.
It's not speculation. It's not speculation. We have been issuing building permits at a far higher rate than we're creating new lots for the last five years. And so the the BLPs that we're taking in right now, a lot of them are on completely vacant lots that have never been developed before. So we we used to spend a lot of time with our BLPs researching the property. So we we used to spend a lot of time with our BLPs researching the property, verifying the other structures on the property, making sure they're compliant. We're not having to do a lot of that because a lot of these are vacant lots, so.
So it could be, okay, maybe a long time property owner holder is now selling it off or selling off parts of it.
Right.
For for whatever reason.
Right.
Economic, personal economic, get on the train and move along with the economy, whatever.
Yeah.
The money, it's our retirement fund, so it's time to move it.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, it's just an interesting fact, I want to make a comment about it.
Oh, no doubt.
It's a fact, it's part of the analysis for land use and population.
And it seems like we we had a guy come to us the other day that was upset, wanted to know how people found out that he was doing a a minor land division on his property. They were showing up, asking him if they could buy that lot. He wanted to know how they were finding out about it.
It was just coincidence because
Yeah.
There's people knocking doors every day. Every day.
Yeah.
Just happened to mail boxes, fuller, fuller. Hi, I'm go around, I want to buy your property.
Yes.
Really.
Yeah, that's that's a pretty good story, I like that there that it just is it just high demand right now, um. So, um, along with that, though, we we have taken in twenty-four applications for zone changes, so we did number thirteen tonight. Of course, they're not in order, but we, that's why, that's why we have so many meetings coming up is because of zone changes. The interesting thing is that the changes that we've made to the ordinance have decreased the number of large variances. So, so I think we have ten variances so far this year, which is probably less, a little less than last year at this time. The, we are, we are having a few more thirty percent variances. But I think because we changed the setbacks around a little bit, it's helped offset some of those variances, some of those big variances, right? Greater than thirty percent. So. That's a that that's an improvement. I I think that updating the comprehensive plan will help with the zone change requests that we're having. It was interesting tonight to talk, to hear the discussion on the roadway where they talk about requi, you know, that required sixty-foot easement. I'm concerned about those large easements in these rural areas. They they lend to further splitting. Because there's a sixty-foot easement, it it helps justify more splits down down those roads, so. Yeah, and a major highway, yeah. What would be your opposite?
Maybe gravel roads.
I live in a rural area, major highways, you know. Segal Road. Yeah, Center Valley Road. Yep. Sally Road, so, yeah, that's a, i- is definitely something interesting to consider as as we work through the comprehensive plan and and try to identify, I I really think that some of our challenges that we've identified agricultural as ten and twenty acre lots and it really agriculture is not that. Right? So. Um. It's a, it it'll, we we really do need to address land use in the complex sooner than later, so.
All the people are squawking about cutting down properties, everything seems to be moving towards five.
Yep. It is, it is a lot of acreage, yep. Yep, the challenge with it is, is it creates, it increases the need for services, so it's important where it goes. Right?
If more of it goes into fives now, it'll be a lot harder for the big subdivisions and those falls.
Yep.
Could be, is there a five acre subdivision?
A consent agenda?
Seems like it's half of what we do, all very similar.
They are, and again, that's the next, you know, we've got a meeting next Thursday, a meeting the Thursday after that, then we have a break and then Thursday after that.
We're we're meeting Wednesday night.
Oh, yeah. The here Segal, speaking of five acre lots. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we are meeting on the twenty-sixth at six PM with the Segal. Maybe.
Yep.
Out of state somewhere.
Both nights? Twenty sixteen, twenty seven?
I am on the twenty sixteen, twenty seven. And then the first week of July, for sure.
You're here. They were going to be here.
All right. Like, that's
We still have
That's all I have, we we did Chad map the BLPs, um. And again, you look at that, you look at it and it just is all, you just follow the main corridors of the county and it, that's that's where the BLPs are. There's there's not really any highlighted specific area, they're just, they're just all throughout the county. So along the main corridors, so. Yep.
We have a question from the
No questions from the
I I was just curious, I couldn't, I couldn't hear Bill the other day, which helped him make that motion to go ahead regarding the subdivision on that.
Hmm.
I did hear him say at other hearings, so I didn't know if that cut back.
Hmm. Yeah, because it was, it was partly my fault because of the way that I wrote the ordinance, I didn't when we took that two-week sabbatical, like it came back to the P and Z, I should have, I should have updated everything in the code to match what what the commission wanted, um, that was, it, I still am not done with it, that's how much there was to do. And so, um, the, so I just took that document to the board with with the recommendations and so um, they, they did not hesitate on on the keeping the short plat, they didn't hesitate on that, they kept it, they they didn't hesitate on the, you know, four lot MLD. They, they actually considered, uh, for a minute, uh, the the sanitary sign off, in fact, it I, it stayed in for most of the meeting, they actually considered it pretty seriously. And uh, and spent spent some time on it and there was only uh, one, one or two comments from the public and so, um. Then during deliberations, they did, they changed their mind on that. But the public hearing with the P and Z commission, oh, that was the other thing, they they wanted the public hearing with the board left in. So. They, uh, so they left that in, yeah. So. So the red one from about fifteen pages to about three.
Different question, different topic. Vacation rentals. Um, I forget where we ended up with that. People who want to establish a vacation rental, do they have to come to planning to get?
Permit, yes.
Permit, right?
Yep.
And that permit basically says you gotta have something to tell the people renting, numbers to call. And you gotta talk with your neighbors, let them know what's going on. So.
So we we actually do that, we we print out a a yellow card that they have to put up in their, in their facility, in their home. Uh, their their rental that has the numbers to call. Um, and then we send the notice three hundred feet around the property to the neighbors with that information. So we do that to make sure that that happens, the, um. Yeah.
Would that increase to a thousand?
No, we, it's only on the subdivision ordinance. Yeah.
And how many, how many are there of record?
Um. Uh, we're over three hundred. We're over three hundred vacation rentals and we're issuing, so it's a two-year permit and we're issuing renewals on those.
But did that, I think it ended up, there was no sign off from Ben Hindle that the system could take it?
Um, correct.
I know of one that's a two-bedroom house with a two-bedroom rainfield advertising it can sleep eleven people.
So eleven people, that's odd because it's a three per bedroom plus three, so could be twelve.
Uh, that's what I check it out.
Yep.
I seriously doubt that they came with the count.
Yep, and we do send out letters and we are, we we are seriously upgrading our compliance, so we hired a, we hired a uh, compliance permit manager. And uh, she comes with, uh, she comes with a lot of legal experience and uh, she's been, we're having a meeting in the morning with the attorneys to decide how how we are going to start issuing citations for violations. So, uh, in our budget, we're going to ask the board to pay for an attorney for our department to help with the follow-up on on those citations and uh, we're working on trying to figure out how to get our three compliance guys certified, they all have, two of them are 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 post-certified but have lapsed, need renewal and then they all have been post-certified at one point, so, um, we're just trying to de- decide the best route to go for our compliance folks to help with all these things, so, um.
So clarify, are they going to go back to Meridian for post-training? But when you say post, then
Yes, I don't know if we need to be completely post-certified to issue uh, infractions. So that's, we're still trying to get to the bottom of that.
Yeah, because I don't think the parking attendant is post-certified.
Probably not. I don't know.
We're closed. And this is what do they want to talk about? Same person? Well, we're in a session with ourselves, we don't share that with the public, correct?
Right, we are, we're Go ahead, G.
Director season.
Hmm, he did.
Yep, hi, Dave Bowman again, I just wanted to ask if the people we're speaking could get somewhere near the microphone, because it's, it's, you can't be heard, that's all I, I just wanted to ask that.
Yeah, very good, okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so that's, that's kind of where the department is, uh, updates, um. So. We'll see you Wednesday, I guess.
Okay.
Are you having dinner on Wednesday?
Wednesday and Thursday? You, one of those nights might be pizza if we do.
Wednesday is five thirty or six.
Six.
So that gives us time to get there.
So, this meeting is continued till uh, five twenty-six at six o'clock downstairs. Be in the Bonner County Administration Building, fifteen hundred Highway Two. Be in the first floor conference room. We'll have online Zoom teleconferencing and YouTube. It is seven forty.